This meeting is a meeting of the school board and public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated by the agenda. Visitors requesting permission to address the board, visitors requesting permission to address the board on specific agenda items should sign in before the meeting starts on the form on the board table. The board requested discussion time limit of three minutes on any specific agenda item, and we ask visitors to make only one appearance per item. We ask those addressing the board to speak from the podium and to state their name and address. Board Policy 0167 dot three dictates that personnel issues will not be addressed. Concerns about individual employees of the district should be brought to the superintendent or designated. The meeting site is fully accessible. Any person requiring further accommodations should contact the superintendent at the School Corporation Central Office. The Board of Trustees respectfully requests those guests, invokers, and attendants to be courteous and silence their cellphone. As always, we do start with our board meeting with a prayer, and Ms. Keith, can you say a prayer for us, please?
Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us here this evening to do the work of the school district, and pray that you would guide us and direct our decisions. We also pray for those who were affected by the storms yesterday evening, pray that you would help them and guide them as they clean up and make repairs. Amen.
Okay. I don't know why, call to order, and we start with pledge allegiance. Michelle, could you lead us with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, we do have a quorum present. Item number D, Mr. Hurd.
Lebanon Community School Corporation will cultivate and enrich every student by influencing and enriching their lives through the power of education, and do so in a positive and safe learning environment.
Thank you. Good news. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. It's my pleasure to report to the board this evening. Probably the biggest item of good news is the start of school we had, which occurred exactly a week ago, last Tuesday, as we opened all six school doors and greeted our incoming students. A couple of things to point out. One, it was just a very positive day. If you had a chance to get to school, as you saw, that the exterior of every school was just in pristine condition, and the inside, too, from new painting to floors to new furniture in a lot of our buildings, new computers throughout the corporation. It was just a great start of school. I've made comment to several folks that, for whatever reason, the culture, the staff we've had, the good things that we have going on in programming, this is one of the most exciting starts that I've had, and that was echoed from all six principals, and so we have a lot of people to thank for that. But Lebanon Community Schools presented themselves nicely on the first day of school. And as always, the number of lighted tennis shoes that kindergarteners wear amazes me. If you watch them run down the hall, those lights blink like no tomorrow, and boy, they had a good time, so that was good as well. And at the start of this year, and we've talked about this a little bit with the board in the past, you know, we had new teacher orientation, we started the school year with three days of staff professional development, opportunity to work in their room, and one of the activities that we encourage all of the employees of Lebanon Community Schools to consider is to participate voluntarily, participate in the United Way of Indiana campaign. And Ms. Diane Scott heads that up, and some with help from Ms. Todd Arud and Ms. Kristen Scott. Diane really focused with staff, and we had some creative competition, and just some good old-fashioned volunteer spirit by our staff. And so I'm pleased to announce that as of today, we have a record amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars that members of the Lebanon Community School Corporation staff, both certified and classified, have pledged to United Way of Indiana. Within that, we had a little bit of a competition. Jeans seems to be a great attractor. And so with that, we had the idea to come up with Genius Day, which will be later on this year, and what we said is if we had the K-5 staff and the 612 staff, a little competition, and the staff, the group of staff that contributed the most money would have a Genius Day, which means they got to wear blue jeans and show how smart they were on that day. And so it was very close, but pleased to announce that our K-5 teachers contributed six thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and our 612 teachers contributed six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. And so our K-5 staff will be participating in Genius Day. But it was all for a good cause. United Way services a lot of young.
Can you make us a postal Friday?
Oh, there you go, postal Friday. If you got any change, hang on to it, because if Diane gets close to you, trust me, she'll ask for it for United Way. Very proud at how our staff have put almost fourteen thousand dollars into the United Way fund that comes back to students in our community and families in our community. Given the start of school and the spirit of giving and compassion that our staff demonstrates, I think that's great, good news to share with the board this evening. So thank you for allowing us that opportunity.
Absolutely. And I thought something else, and I talked to Jen about this, is just our social media aspect has been out there quite a bit, and so something new, but definitely it gets the word out, and very positive. Thank you for all the work on that.
Well, again, Ms. Todd Arud is the new Communications and Public Relations Officer in our office, and her enthusiasm has been infectious, as we had, if you notice, we have a hashtag LCSCstory, and we had that T-shirt, which we have available for board as well, to have all staff members wear. And just the positive comments I've gotten from parents and social media feedback, it really has been a plus to start the year that way. So, and some of the stories that we have, and some of the photos that were shared, and some of the feedback that we received, all lended itself to really contribute to that start of the school feeling of just something special this year. Jen has lots of things planned, and later on in the meeting, we're going to have just a little sample of some of the work she did with working with new teachers, but I've told people, and my father was a superintendent, and if my dad ever, if I would ever told him I had my own police force as a school superintendent, and our own marketing and public relations person, he's doing spins in his grave, because those are things that are our assets and our needs in our corporation, and I'm very pleased that we have excellent individuals that are filling those roles for us, and the board's foresight to support those positions that we have there with both our SRO program and our communications and public relations position. So thank you, appreciate you bringing that up.
Item number two, approval of minutes. Board, I need approval of our minutes from July nineteenth, our regular scheduled school board meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions about minutes from last meeting? If not, all those in favor accepting the minutes from our July nineteenth, twenty sixteen regular school board meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, a motion passes. Item number three, audience and visitors, no one did sign up. Item number four, consent agenda for routine business matters, Mr. Tate.
Yes, my pleasure to report to the board and the community this evening. Our monthly financial report shows these percents expended as of July thirty-first. For our general fund, fifty-five point six one percent, transportation operation forty-eight point eight zero percent. At this time, I'd ask for approval of claims numbered four zero two one nine through four zero four two seven, payrolls dated July twenty-second and August fifth of two thousand sixteen. The claims total two million five thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Payrolls total one million one hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, for a total of three million one hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. Request approval of those at this time.
I move we approve the claims as submitted.
Any questions about Mr. Tate's reports on paying our bills and paying our employees? All those in favor of the routine agenda and business matters for claims four zero two one nine through four zero four two seven, and payrolls on July twenty-second and August fifth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, a motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, Dr. Taylor, employee of the month.
As is the tradition at our monthly school board meetings, we like to recognize an employee within our corporation that exceeds and does an outstanding job. Maceo Van Quest?
Please.
He has much more enthusiasm for work than he does for receiving. But this gentleman probably gets walked on more than any other employee, myself included in the corporation, because this is our floor technician. Maceo handles all of the floor work in all of the buildings, carpet, tile, hardwood. He ensures that the first impression you have when you step foot in any one of our schools is a positive impression. He's hard worker, self-motivated, high man integrity. He takes great pride in his work, which is evidenced by just looking down and not up. But I tell you what, the work he does sets a tone for every student and teacher and parent that comes in our building. Hard worker, dedicated, and we very much appreciate it. So on behalf of the board, I would like to present you with just this little plaque and a small token of their appreciation, a little card with a little mark, and we thank you for all the work we do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number six, agenda for routine staff matters. You're up again.
We'd like to present to the board this evening for your review and consideration as a consent agenda item, items from classified staff, the extracurricular accounts, certified staff, and staff communication. Under classified six A, you note that there's a number of new classified hires, representing everyone from substitute teachers to food service to custodial staff and building assistant. Then under the ECA, this evening, we have recommendations from Mr. O'Rourke, high school principal, from Molly Sover, for, excuse me, Shover, as the SAD, that's Students Against Drunk Driving, co-sponsor, and Trish Patmore as the Fine Arts Department Chair. Mr. Smith, athletic director from Lebanon's Middle School, is recommending Amanda Scoble as seventh grade volleyball, and Joe LaPage as boys tennis, Frank Hensley as assistant boys tennis, and Ryan Williamses as sixth grade football. Austin Mark is assistant boys soccer, and Sean Keith, volunteer boys tennis coach. Mr. Levine, athletic director at high school, the Lebanon High School, is recommending as volunteer coaches Dayton Jennings as boys and girls soccer, Dale West as cross country, Dan Hasty, cross country, Aubrey Green as cheerleading, and Mr. Levine is also this evening recommending Mr. Jacob Turner as the new strength and conditioning coach here at Lebanon High School. In addition, then, we have this evening, letters of resignation have been received from Adam Spencer, Central's teacher, Ashley Bergen, and Kayla Meyer, both Hattie B. Stokes teachers, who had submitted letters after the last board meeting. And then, under communication, we also have Mrs. Solomon recommending Laura Trafford as a temporary contract teacher for a Title One Impact position for the sixteen-seventeen school year, Laura Gonzalez for a temporary contract for maternity leave, Morgan Brendel for a temporary contract for maternity leave, Megan Britt as a self-contained special education teacher on a regular contract, Dean Schreiber as an inclusive resource special education teacher, and Devon Redant as a third grade teacher. Mrs. Taggart and Mrs. Outkout are recommending Hilda Trampick for the art position at both Perry Worth and Central, that's a shared position, and Mrs. Taggart is recommending Hannah Reese as a grade four teacher. Dr. Yatz from Harney Elementary is recommending Leah Byers as a grade four teacher, and Isaac Huntan as a grade four teacher. Mrs. Outkout at Central is recommending Nicole Mitchell as a grade one teacher. Mr. O'Rourke, Lebanon High School, is recommending Jennifer Merritt as a culinary arts teacher, and Mr. Dungy from Lebanon Middle School is recommending Amanda Scoble as a special education teacher. I present those recommendations to the board for your review and consideration this evening.
Board, I'd like to put them all together, so I'd ask for a motion to accept the agenda for routine staff matters, and we're going to go A, B, C, and D, put those all together. So I need a motion for that, please.
Motion to approve is presented.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Just one for me. Jacob Turner, the strength and conditioning coach, is that a full-time position, Mr. Levine?
Yes, we determined that that would be a full-time funded position on staff this year. The young man we had, Ethan, before did an outstanding job, but he went to Martinsville where there was a teaching position involved, and so Mr. Levine had a very competitive interview pool, and we're fortunate to have the ability to hire a full-time position. One of the considerations was that given the complex we have, our weight and training complex, and the number of student athletes, as well as physical education classes that are worked with, we felt that it was important to ensure that we had a quality person and therefore compensate them appropriately, and so a full-time classified position was offered.
Jacob Turner's a really good young man. It's nice to have him in the building. Oh, it's a different Jacob Turner. I'm sure you're also a very fine young man. Totally giving you the benefit of the doubt right now.
Pressure's on.
If you meet the other Jacob Turner, he's a really good guy.
Mr. Hurd?
The high number of food service approvals, is there just that big a turnover this year? It always seemed like in the past there'd be two or three, but fifteen?
Higher than average turnover, so there's good news, bad news. Good news is Jennifer did an outstanding job. To my understanding, we were fully staffed when school opened. We will be encountering some issues, given the pay scale and pay structure we have. We have a pay scale, pay structure that was competitive four or five years ago. It's at the lower end now. And so this is normally, as you pointed out, there's five to seven, eight people, but with the uptick in the economy, the availability of higher-paying hourly wages, and some folks just didn't want to work, we had a higher number of food service positions open. I don't think it reflects at all on either the quality or the work environment. Obviously, our kitchens and our food service areas are top-rate, public schools, private schools as well, but I think we've discussed across the board, one of the challenges we're going to face is what every other business person faces during this time, is the competition for paying a competitive hourly wage.
What do we start them at?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
What do we start them at?
Nine, nine fifty. Nine fifty. And you can drive by some fast food restaurants and see that that's either matched or beat on an advertisement in the window. So the good news, Mr. Hurd, is Jennifer really did a great job in opening up all of our food services for breakfast first day of school. The challenge will be for us to retain those employees or for to continue to find those employees down.
On the strength and conditioning coach position, that matter who it is, what is his hours before, during school, after, I mean, how is this going to work if he's just, is that going to be a class? Is it going to be just working with the teams and the season? I mean, how is this position going to be operated?
It's a combination of both, but I'm going to ask Mr. Levine to address that more in depth.
He comes in late in the day, about nine thirty-ten, to work with head right, head of the meeting, who have the training classes, and is required to stay after school till the weekend closes at five thirty. So he's working about thirty-five hours a week, that's what I tell you, thirty-five hour, thirty-five hour week half, being in the classified position. He would work with the teams after school, the student athletes, and are obviously more into the work, the coaches after school, during school day, those who are teaching the classes. So he doesn't start exactly at the beginning of the school day.
He has a flexible schedule, I guess would be the best way to describe it.
Well, flexible because obviously blocks, two days, three days, weeks, a couple of different times, but mainly he's leaving and blocking every day with the other coaches and having to show.
I can't, Mr. Turner, did you have previous experience in a school? Did you come from a school doing the same thing?
The collegiate one, yes.
Collegiate, okay, okay, I knew.
Once we vote voting in, I'd ask him to tell us a little about himself.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go there and judge it.
All right. That's my fault there. I should have said that.
No, you're good.
Okay. Board, we've got a motion. I need all those in favor, let me back up again, is there any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the classified, ECA-certified, and staff communications, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All right.
Mr. Bertrand, it is my pleasure. We have Jacob Turner with us this evening. Jacob's coming from Fort Wayne. Jacob, do you stand up and tell us a little about yourself, and we're excited to have you onboard.
I'm Jacob Turner. Yeah, I'm originally from Fort Wayne. I got my undergrad degree at Triunversity in Angola, and then this recent master's degree, and also my state university, of course, Tennessee. I did the same thing, I was a graduate assistant in most of the profession, so college is most of my experience, but it's easy to get transferred to the students here. So that's the way to honor. Just want to thank them all for the opportunity. If you have any questions, you can ask.
Jacob, we want to welcome you. We're glad you're part of the Lebanon Community Schools family. He's currently staying at the Holiday Inn, and is looking for an apartment, so anyone that's got an apartment, please let him know, because we'd like to get him out of the Holiday Inn as quick as possible. Jacob, very committed, wanting to move here, relocate, live in Lebanon, become fully engaged. All the references and all the discussion, one of the common threads that Mr. Levine got was dedicated and committed, not only knowledgeable, obviously with a postgraduate degree, we're very pleased to have him onboard, and we're looking for great things. As I told him, like I tell every coach, we're with you, win or win, on this whole thing, so welcome, glad you're onboard.
He does have one chink in his armor, he's a Notre Dame fan.
Go Irish.
That's all that she needed to know.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. Thank you, board, for your endorsement on those requests this evening.
Okay. Item number seven, academic achievement. Dr. Taylor.
We have two, as we mentioned earlier, Ms. Todd Arud- Ms. Tatarud was actively involved in working with the, um, staff and part of our academic achievements this evening, we've asked her to display a video that she put together and basically it's introducing all of our new staff. I think some of you may have seen it, it's been on social media, uh, but for those of us that sit with me and don't really get there as much, it's really exciting. And by the way, this was done with an iPhone, um, just another testimony to, to what we can do with some of the, the technology we have. So, Jennifer? One of the other things that Jennifer has helped do is, you may notice that there's Lebanon Tiger window clings that we're promoting and, and we're hoping to get those on as many vehicles because as we know, a number of our parents work in Indianapolis or Lafayette. And so, it's time we get the good news about Lebanon out. And one very simple way to do that, that Jen felt was cost-effective but yet highly visible was to make sure every parent, student, business owner, board member, staff member had one of those Lebanon Tiger window clings to proudly display in their automobile. It was also brought to my attention that it would be good if we had license plates. So, I went to Jen and she's in the process of looking into license plates as well. So, we'll be seeing a lot with Lebanon. So, Jen, what do you have for us this evening?
Hi, I'm Lydia Bradford, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Harney Elementary and I transferred here from another corporation because I truly believe in the philosophy that Harney Elementary has.
Hi, I'm Amanda Scoble and I came to Lebanon Community School Corporation because my kids go here. I moved to the community about a year ago and I really liked what they had to offer and wanted to join the faculty as well.
I'm here in Lebanon so I can help start my family.
I am so happy to be back at Lebanon. I call this, um, community my home. I value it. I call it the best kept secret in Indiana. My kids go to school here, but more importantly, I'm happy to share my gift of teaching to the students in the community.
Hi, my name is Devon Redant and I'm teaching third grade at Hattie B. Stokes Elementary and I'm excited to be coming back to the classroom after a brief stay at home.
This is where I graduated in nineteen eighty-six, this is where my wife teaches, this is where my children go to school and I just love this community.
I'm really excited to be back in Lebanon because this is my alma mater. I am a graduate of Lebanon High School, go Tigers. My favorite thing about my day and what I'm looking forward to is seeing those smiling faces coming off the bus this afternoon.
Really excited to be at Lebanon Schools and it's a growing district and they really take education and values of education seriously. I'm looking forward to being a part of it.
My name is Becky Warren and I am excited to live and work in the same community with a short commute to work.
Hi, um, I'm so happy to be teaching at Perry Worth and Central this year. Uh, I'm excited to bring them art and, um, I'm back home in Indiana after living in Nashville for nineteen years and teaching there, so I'm happy to be back.
I have been working the past several years about an hour away from home, so I'm very thankful to be back in a corporation close to home and I'm very excited to be at Lebanon Schools.
Hi, my name is Megan Stewart and I was born and raised in Louisiana. So, I've been a part of the community my entire life. I am most excited about empowering my students to become lifelong learners.
I'm excited to work in Lebanon because I want to be a part of the community where my children are, where I live and really get involved in our community.
I'm with the Culinary Arts at Lebanon High School. Why I chose Lebanon is because I got a church in this community and I wanted the kids to be able to see that I live at school like I live at church.
My name is Dermot, I'm the preschool, uh, speech language pathologist. Um, I'm excited to be in Lebanon to work with little itty bitty guys and make an impact on them.
Hi, I'm Katie Myers, I'm the music teacher at our community in Central and I'm just really excited to get my teaching career started in Lebanon.
Hi, my name's Brittany Gunter and I'm excited to be back where my family is from and to be back where the best pizza hut is.
Hi, I'm Angela, I'm a Lebanon graduate, so I just want to come back to the community that gave so much to me.
I'm Jill Harney, I'm going to be at Stokes and I am looking forward to being back with all of my friends at Stokes that I've missed for the last six months.
And I came to Lebanon, uh, by accident, but it was a happy accident because I got to live in the community, I found out what a great community it is, my daughters started going to Harney and now I get the opportunity to teach at Harney and I'm really excited because I really like the positive spirit of this community.
I am so proud to be here. I grew up in the community and had many great teachers going through school here and I just feel honored to be able to be a part of that now.
Hi, I'm Angela Sims and I'm excited to come to Lebanon Schools because my family moved here about four years ago and I've really been looking forward to getting into the community and joining the school district, so excited to start this new journey.
What's up Lebanon High School? So proud to be a part of your high school, be a part of your community, looking forward to a great year with you guys and school second to none, hardworking, strong, committed, passionate, and again, so excited to be a part of this.
Hi, my name is Logan Mikesell and I am excited to be at Lebanon Community Schools because they make such a big area feel smaller and I love the whole family aspect about it.
Hi, I'm Brienne Gesswein, um, I came to Lebanon to, um, kind of start a new life after graduating college and going to high school in the same town for my life, so I'm going to start now.
Most of you know me as Kaufman, so I am back just with a new name and I am so happy to be back because this is home as any of my prior students know that, I've said that Lebanon Tiger, this is where my heart is.
My name is Mary Brown and I think that I am most excited, my family and I are moving to Lebanon, I really like the tight feel of the community and I really like how Oregon is involved, the community is school. I really like that feeling and I'm looking forward to sending my children to come and be a part of this.
My name is Leah Byers and I am excited to work with a wonderful team at Harney Elementary and I'm just really excited to have the best year ever.
I am excited to be at the Lebanon Middle School this year. Um, I have been there as an I A for the last six years and it is a family. When Dr. Taylor talks about LCS being a family, he is not kidding. Um, so it feels like it's right to move into being, um, a classroom teacher.
She saw a part of the new teacher orientation was a, a boot camp kind of concept that Mr. Scott and Mrs. Ottinger kind of put together and that included a tour of the corporation on a school bus. So, if nothing else, not only did they get to see the corporation and all of our neighborhoods and all, all the district that we incorporate in Lebanon Community Schools, they got a, a firsthand experience of how hot it is on a school bus without air conditioning, but I tell you, I'm so excited, I think I shared with the board earlier, I actually had an opportunity to interview all of the new staff. Mrs. Ladd had the setup appointments and they came into the office. Some had never met a superintendent, others just shared how excited they were to be back. There were a couple of former students, which didn't make me feel old, but made me feel proud from my middle school days. And so, I, I can only say and compliment all of our principals and administrators, I think they did an excellent job in, in interviewing. I'm, I'm collecting the numbers now, the number of interviews is going to run out to about eight to nine per employee and then the number of applications is going to be almost three times that. So, we went through a, a lot of applications, went through a lot of interviews, a lot of, um, team interviews as well as, as whole faculty interviews and I think we just have an outstanding crop of new teachers. So, I'm, I'm, again, I've said this before, I apologize for being redundant, I'm just excited about how this year is starting out. So, thank you very much, Jennifer, thank you so much. You're a big part of that excitement, we appreciate that. As part, Mr. Bertrand, as part of our academic, um, presentation also, it's my pleasure at this time to introduce Mrs. Kelly Solomon, principal of Hattie B. Stokes Elementary and she has some folks and programs that she wants to share with us. Mrs. Solomon?
Good evening, everyone. I am, um, here to discuss a very exciting, um, share a very exciting opportunity at Stokes that we are, um, going to start this year. We are working together with a couple of community partners and I'm going to have them share a little bit about a new program we're bringing in for, um, students specifically starting at the fourth grade this year. It's called STEM Scouts. And so, here tonight to share information with us about this program that we're, um, taking, um, information and getting members now from the fourth grade, um, students. We have, um, Dustin O'Brien from the Lebanon STEM. We have Spencer Waldman, um, she is from the STEM Scouts Organization. And Ashley Bailey is, um, going to serve as our, um, school sponsor for this, um, new initiative that we are starting. So, they're going to share a little bit about the, um, STEM Scouts program.
Again, my name's Dustin O'Brien, I'm a father of a four-year-old and a kindergartner at Perry Worth, I'm a kindergartner back there. Lived in this community all my life, um, we're passing out a brochure to, to explain a little bit about Lebanon STEM Foundation and primarily STEM Scouts tonight. I'm a partner in a technology firm both in Boston and South Bend and about three years ago, came together with a couple of fathers, um, and employee Josh Hawks of the, the school corporation and started a non-for-profit called Lebanon STEM Foundation to really provide enrichment programs for not only our kids but kids throughout the community around science, technology, engineering, mathematics and really enrichment programs that, um, provide them opportunities that may not be afforded to them right now in the, in, um, in the schools and in their, in this community, uh, around robotics teams, 3D printing, uh, computer programming and really provide them opportunities to enrich, um, their love of learning in those areas. And so, we've been sort of in silent mode the last three years. We have a headquarters that we rent an old church from a gentleman Charlie Campbell. We do some programming in the last three years around a competitive robotics team, um, and, uh, some coding classes, but been pretty low-key. And, uh, last year, we had an opportunity to, um, um, work with a fourth grade teacher and, and Mrs. Solomon with a, the career nights at, at Stokes that happened last fall. And in that, they wanted a STEM presence, so, um, the first that came to my mind was STEM Scouts, an organization that Spencer will explain a little bit, but it's really about en- enriching kids' opportunity to explore and scout around them in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And so, they brought this bus called the Vortex, really lightened everybody's eyes up in those families and Miss Solomon took the direction there and really, uh, thank you for her leadership and execution, uh, to really provide an opportunity this year to all fourth graders in Stokes, to this unique program after school, uh, from four to five thirty, is really going to provide them an opportunity, um, to, to see, to, to learn as fourth graders, as ten year olds, um, really what robotics and, uh, computers and technology and science is all about and hopefully create some lifelong, um, interests and potentially even career paths for them. And, and my organization, uh, part of this is we're chartering the, um, as a community partner with the schools and with STEM Scouts, providing, uh, funding to, to reduce the, the family fee by half, paying for all the adults, all the registration fees, uh, the liability insurance for all of it. And so, we're the, the sponsoring organization as a non-for-profit to really bring this, um, to Stokes. And for us, it's, it's a hope that, uh, we can provide programs like this, initiatives that we have going on right now, potentially at Perry Worth, at Central, at Stokes, at Middle School, and then also some after-school program that we're going to do this fall at six thirty. So, with this, I want to, I want to, um, thank Ashley for volunteering her time to run this as a parent, as a, as an instructive assistant and employee at the Council, Mrs. Solomon for her leadership and execution, um, and Spencer for helping us bring this program to the fourth graders at Stokes. Spencer?
Good evening, everyone. Really honored to be able to be here. I can tell you, I've never had as much, I don't think I've ever seen as much like chartered partner support, community support and parent support as came initially from Lebanon. So, really a testament to how strong the community is and incredibly how strong and supportive Hattie B. Stokes has been of this program. So, STEM Scouts, STEM is the buzzword, science, technology, engineering and math. We are a pilot program from the Boy Scouts of America. We, but we are co-ed starting in third grade. So, at this point, as a pilot, we are the youngest co-ed program the Boy Scouts has to offer and we are all about taking kids through the mission of the Boy Scouts of America, which is to make ethical, moral young people by instilling the values of the Scout oath and the Scout law, but doing so by giving them the chance to be creative and learn and be inquisitive through STEM experiments and hands-on STEM meetings. So, they'll meet weekly after school and be guided through, uh, in-depth curriculum that's all about, uh, every different concept of STEM, really. It's every four weeks, the module changes from bubbleology and how bubbles work and how they're made to how contraptions work, how computers work. These kids are guided through hands-on weekly experiments for an hour and a half led by our courageous volunteers like Amanda here. It really is, uh, one of the most inspiring programs, um, that I'm, I've been really fortunate to be a part of as it's been sitting. We've been around for about a year, so we're slowly creeping up. We had a hundred kids this year and we're expanding to, um, we look to be in about twenty schools this year and we're really, really excited to get one out. Hattie B. Stokes is going to be the first one in Lebanon and really the first in Boone County and getting out past, um, Marion County and a couple outliers, so we're really, really excited. It's gonna, it's been a really successful program so far and we hope that we can just expand and give these fourth graders the chance to really explore, play, develop leadership and teamwork skills and understand how the values of the Scout oath and law, which is like duty to self, duty to God and duty to our country and how that all fills in and fits within exploring their passions and staying involved in STEM because as of sixth grade, STEM, uh, interest drops off in most kids. So, hopefully we can spark and light that fire and keep them engaged through the programs that we offer here in the community and, uh, continue to make our, our students really, really strong in this program.
So, as you can see, it's going to be a great program for us to get started here at Stokes, especially, um, knowing how, um, the overall goals of, um, the STEM Scouts program does weave together very nicely, um, with our ambassador leadership program that we already do at Hattie B. Stokes for, for the fifth grade kids, helping them understand the importance of being leaders in their community. Um, so we felt that that fit very nicely, um, with this program. Also, in looking at our school data, this school improvement team felt that starting the fourth grade where we are being tested specifically in the area of science, um, and knowing that, um, we as a Title I school have been lower performing in math actually more so than, um, in arts, um, so we felt like that this was another great opportunity for us to first start with fourth grade and then our goal then is to expand, of course, to the other grade levels, third and fifth. Um, so, we're very excited to get this opportunity started at Stokes and we'd entertain any questions you may have.
There might be some opportunity with the high school project Lead the Way program and the middle school Gateway program, so maybe some of those students in the high school and middle school could become part of this and help with some support. So, Wade Thatcher and Ryan Way would be our two teachers, might be able to put you in contact with some students that are in, stuck in front of middle school and high schools, just maybe some resources for you.
Thank you.
You said you have a hundred kids now, just in that program?
So, we ended June with a hundred kids. Uh, we started December with six, so we expanded very, very quickly. Uh, we tried to expand controlled, so we're, we are able to offer as much service to our communities as possible as it's myself and one other person, but it's been really, really successful and schools are picking it up and we're helping them run with it to encourage more kids to stay involved and explore STEM.
But we're, we're the only school in Boone County?
Only school, period, like, no one even knows, so yeah, it's the only school in Boone County to try it. I think it's going to be, we're really excited. We have our sign-up night this Thursday for all the fourth graders, um, I'll do a presentation to them about it. If you're around, feel free to come by and see, see all the kids, they're really excited. I just talked to all of them this morning, or this afternoon, so, uh, you're welcome to, to come by and learn, learn even more about the program if you're around Hattie B. Stokes, uh, this Thursday evening.
At what time? What time is that again on Thursday?
At six thirty.
Six thirty.
Now, okay, it's for fourth grades, but then how often do they meet?
Weekly.
Weekly.
Once a week.
Is it something too that if a fourth grader can like, do they, like, if they start at the beginning and then they can't come for like three weeks, can they kind of hit and miss or would they fall behind in what you're doing or?
Um, actually, not at all and that's kind of the beauty of changing the modules every four weeks to be a new topic so that if a kid can't make it a week or two, they might not earn that badge online for completing that module, but they start fresh with the new module like everyone else does. So, uh, they might, who might, if they miss the first day, it might be a little bit of a learning, but there's, um, there's always background and reinforcement and support. So, a kid can miss a week or two weeks and still hop right in, um, join the team and gets to going on, on whatever they're working on.
That's great. So, Dustin, did you know about STEM Scouts?
I did, yeah, so, um, I've been Boy Scouts all my life, scout life, third passion, my work, passion, my family, my work, uh, Boy Scouts and STEM, so STEM has been a new passion for me over the last two, three years, the same passion I grow up, so. So yeah, I, I knew about the program at the start last year.
Kind of started putting it together.
I saw all the pursuit. I, we were looking for a way to, to help at elementary schools, get programs after-school.
Nice. What a good fit.
And obviously, all about, I would be, programs like this throughout our community, at every Boys and Girls Club, four age, every elementary school, middle school, they want to see these pictures of provided competitions in STEM Scouts right along with our school students in the newspaper, and it would shine on kids that really excel in areas just like the kids in our school.
Well, thank you for the part you're doing and, and for the, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of it and, and having, having the idea to kind of bring it all together. That's, that's just such a great model of, you know, you didn't have to reinvent the wheel to find a program, you had, found a program, and so that's terrific. It sounds wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
We'll be eager to hear how it goes.
Okay, item number eight, status of LCSC roofs. Mr. Montgomery?
Roofing is not as exciting as some of the other things Mr. Bertrand, but it is...
You get crazy now.
Our district roofs are one of our most important physical assets that protect our buildings, and awfully important. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to talk about the status of the roofs and where we're at today. The beginning, I'd like to give you a little background on our roof management program that we have. All of LCSC properties are under our roof management program. We partner with STR Resources Consultants that give us a lot of resources and access to their database. The properties that are currently surveyed under their systems are seven properties, all of our schools plus admin. The roof sections total one hundred and twenty-two. Seems like a weird number, but this building right here has over thirty-eight roof sections on top of it. You think of a roof as one big thing, but actually it's made of multiple parts and pieces. Each one of these roof sections are different ages and, and were installed at different dates. We monitor about eight hundred and eight thousand square feet. Actually, we have a total roof package of over eight hundred and fifty thousand. Our projected maintenance budget for this year was twenty-three thousand dollars in maintaining the roofs. Our consulting costs were forty-five hundred. And currently, in today's dollars, our total roof value is about sixteen point two million The database that we utilize contains our record drawings, construction details, how each roof section is put together and made, the installing contractors who put them on, our manufacturer's warranties also, which typically are between ten to twenty years. We also utilize our database for leak tracking. We actually track all the leaks that we have in the district and monitor those. We do roof site inspections, roof surveys, and cost projections for future. The leak tracking system is something that we use out of their database. We investigate all leaks. We look at whether it's minor repairs, or caulking, or piping, or drains, or it's an actual roof leak, we determine what the source is. If it's a roof leak, it's entered into their system, and the installing contractor, if it's a warranty, under, still under warranty, is called out, or if it's not under warranty, another contractor is called out that we choose. The contractor is automatically dispatched by the systems. It's pretty automatic, and all the leaks are maintained as a permanent record in their database. The engineering surveys and inspections that are done are actually part of a preventive maintenance program. The engineering surveys are done every three years, and defect reports are created noting issues that need repair and attention. Warranty inspections are done every six months. Those are required by the manufacturers to be done by a licensed or a roof consultant to maintain our current warranty. So if we're going to maintain our twenty-year warranty, we have to have it inspected twice a year. We are people, our own staff, that are also on top of the roofs, cleaning out drains and doing other things up there as well. Indoor air quality, water intrusion, the whole purpose of the roof is to keep the water out, and when we do get watered, we do get leaks. We have a full air quality program that we run through. All the leaks are investigated, and we look for source, not only a source, but what got wet, if it's behind walls, if those areas are dried, if there's an issue, which we remediate it, and we track that very closely. All those are rechecked thirty days later after the leaks have been corrected. Roof aging. We have several different kinds of roofs on our buildings. We have an SBS-type roof, EPDM, PVC, TPO, which is thermoplastic polyurethane, which is a newer roof that we're actually specking on our roofs now, that we're putting on the roofs on the buildings, and standing seam metal roofs, which is one of the best roofs. You can see the average lifespan on the right-hand side of this slide here, about how long they last. Of course, the life cycles of the roof is dependent on the routine maintenance and prompt repairs. Now, let's look at the status of the roofs. Admin building. This shows you the admin building, the roof sections are on top of that building, and you can see there's a big red section here, which means that it's sixteen to twenty years old. Actually, that roof is about nineteen years old, and that roof makes up ninety-one percent of that building. It is well-maintained, it's an EPDM roof, it's well-maintained, and it is still serviceable today. We will be doing repairs on it over the next few years, and we may extend, by doing repairs, we may extend the life of the roof another five to ten years beyond its expected life. Central Elementary School, we've invested quite a bit of money there and replaced roof over the last few years, many roof sections. As you can see, the oldest sections in the yellow there, which is about six years old, and the green sections are all between two and five years old, which make up ninety percent of that building. Harney Elementary School, the yellow is between eleven and fourteen years old, which makes up seventy-nine percent of the building. The red is twenty percent of the building and is about sixteen years old. Some of our future roof sections over the next few years, we'll probably look to these roofs and see what we can do with them. Stokes Elementary School, four-year-old roof is all the green area, that's about eighty percent of that building, and the yellow, which are the flat roofs above the gym and cafe and kitchen area, are EPDM, original installation in two thousand and three. They're about thirteen years old, still serviceable and good condition.
Don, I thought that was a metal roof? No? It says PVC there.
It is PVC.
Oh, okay.
It was meant to look like a metal roof, and they put standing ribs on it, actually glued them on there, on the PVC, to make it look like metal roof.
My bad.
It's actually PVC. Perry Worth is interesting. When you look at this, you see all this blue. We're very fortunate that this blue is standing seam, and you can see that it has an average life cycle of about forty, forty-five years, even longer. Much of the roof out there is made up with the standing seam metal. The green you see here is all between what we're completing right now, actually finished up this week, out of Perry Worth, and about four years old. So it's all brand-new roof, basically a brand-new roof out there. That's all TPO roof. The middle school. Middle school, we've spent, invested a lot of money in, we've done a lot of roofing up there. It's a huge building, two hundred thousand square foot building. The green here is all the brand-new roof that we put on the last few years, between one and four years old, makes up about seventy-four and a half percent of that roof. The red is the original roof that's over the top of the choir area in the auxiliary gym, and that roof was put in nineteen ninety-five. That's about twenty-one years old and getting somewhat to the end of its life. We still repair it and still maintain it, but we may look at, towards that for a future project. That takes us to this building. This building is a bunch of different colors. I separated out the green, the green is basically is all three years old, but you can see that kind of light green there, and then you can see the dark green mixed in with it. The light green was, which is what was part of the Shield Sexton project here when we build this, remodeled this building. The green is what the board approved as additional roofs during that time when we did that project. So you can see with those two areas, we caught a huge amount, sixty-two percent of this building. The yellow is original roof, back to two thousand and two is the oldest, June fourteen, and eight years old total. Twenty-one point five percent makes up those yellow sections. They're still, still serviceable, they're still good quality roofs. The oldest roof out there is on top of the auditorium, and it's, was installed near two thousand. So it's sixteen years old, and that will, we'll take a look at that and see, that may be in a future project of ours. The pink is kind of unusual because the pink actually says nineteen ninety-seven, but then on the right you'll see it says twenty thirteen. That's an original nineteen ninety-seven roof that had a coating put on top of it to extend its life. And that coating, which is a polyurethane coating, it has a twenty-year warranty on it. So that actually will extend the life out considerably beyond what it is right now and get us out of this. Last page is future roof replacements, kind of looking at cost projections. If you look at these, there's some dramatic numbers here. These estimated costs or projected value during the replacement year. All of these projections can be extended, of course, by continuing our quality roof program and continuing investing in our roofs. About, in twenty twenty-five, the estimated roof values of our roofs would be about twenty-five and a half million dollars. So you can see the value will go up, the replacement cost goes up as well, as well. For right now, if the first few years, you're up to about twenty twenty-five, the amount of expenditure is relatively low because we have a lot of new roofs on our buildings, and we're doing very well. Any questions?
I'd like to thank you because I don't, I don't remember seeing something like this before, and I know, I think I'm one of the board members who every year is like, still with the roofs, you know? So it's very, it's very good to have kind of a big picture and information on how the maintenance works and all of that, so.
It's a complicated thing, and there's a lot to it, but it is quite an investment, and does protect our buildings and our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Bertrand, it's unusual, I'm going to have to ask to be excused, I'm not feeling very well.
Sure, absolutely. Item number nine, permission to advertise. Mr. Tate?
Yes, I'd ask board permission at this time to advertise our three-year capital projects plan, our twelve-year bus replacement plan, the two thousand and seventeen school budgets for our general fund, our debt service fund, our referendum debt fund, our capital projects fund, transportation operation fund, bus replacement fund, our pension severance debt fund, and our rainy debt fund at this time. This would be the first step in our budget adoption process. Next month would be a hearing for the public, and October would be our request for approval.
Board, I need a permission, I need a motion to get permission to advertise the three-year capital projects plan, twelve-year bus plan, two thousand and seventeen budget, and all the funds that are in that.
So moved. A second. We, we do this every year.
Right. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor for permission to advertise this three-year capital projects plan, twelve-year bus replacement plan, the two thousand and seventeen school budget, with all the different funds that are in that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, approval to pay stipend to LCSC certified and classified staff. Mr. Tate?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to ask board permission to move forward with the certified staff stipend, one-time stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars. All classified staff will also receive a one-time stipend calculated as follows. One percent of their gross wages from July one of two thousand and fifteen through June thirty of two thousand and sixteen, not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars with a minimum of twenty-five dollars. In your background notes, I've cost that out for each fund that's affected. Request board permission to move forward with this.
Board, I need a motion to approve, to have a pay stipend for LCSC certified and classified staff?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
A second.
Any questions about that?
Okay, so the certified staff, they're getting a one-time, two hundred and fifty-dollar stipend. And the classified, and when will they receive that?
Our, our plan is the first pay in September.
For the certified?
For everybody.
For everybody?
Certified and classified.
So if you're, and you have to be a full-time employee, correct, on the classified?
No, they could be a part-time employee.
So if you're a part-time bus driver?
It's based upon their earnings, not how many hours they work a week. So that, we've found that that drift is different, so this is a formula that we kind of used maybe about four years ago, so we brought this back to the forefront because, like you said, we have part-time, we have full-time. We have cafeteria workers that may work fifteen hours a week. They don't do work during the summer. We have classified employees that work twelve months, forty hours a week. So it's kind of a way to bring it all together.
That's why we did the one percent.
One percent of the gross wage is not to exceed two fifty, but yet a minimum of twenty-five.
So everybody in the corporation, certified and classified, is getting some type of stipend?
If they work for, for the certified, if they're currently employed, for the classified, they had to be employed during that time span, twelve months.
Right.
And it's not administration. Administrators did not receive this.
Right. Okay.
Does that help clarify?
Yeah, and then how are you going to tell the certified staff and classified, or have you, or how did you inform them?
Certified were notified at their orientation. Board president made the announcement to all certified staff. Classified staff received a letter, signed by me, calculated, Mr. Tate?
To go out tomorrow.
Goes out, and it gives the amount, gives the formula and the amount. So again, you know, we had a few that only got twenty-five. We had a number that got two hundred and fifty.
Okay, good.
Couldn't put it out before the board approved.
When the board president spoke, did he embarrass the board? Did he?
He did not. He represented the board quite well. As a matter of fact, he got a bigger round of applause than my blue jean announcement.
Really? Wow.
Well, there was some disbelief, but overall, it was well-received and very appreciated.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor for the two hundred and fifty-dollar stipend for certified and the one percent for no more than two hundred and fifty for classified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank the board. As I've said before numerous times, this was a great start, and, and when staff can unexpectedly receive this acknowledgement of appreciation, and what some would call a token, but others would call considerable stipend amount, it really makes a statement to every employee that they're appreciated and valued, and that came from the board. And so I want to thank the board, and we'll convey that to Mrs. Thomas as well. It was a, really a rare gesture in public education, but one that speaks volumes about the board's support and respect for, for our employees, all employees. So thank you very much.
Item number eleven, NWEA renewal for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. Mr. Barton?
I submit for you tonight a request for a purchase that happens to fall above your twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. It's not a new purchase. We've been involved with the NWA group since two thousand, but the project for the last four, or five, or six years has been two separate projects. One for K two, and that was a separate dollar figure, and one for two to eight, K one, and then two to eight, there was an overlap in second grade. But anyway, they were two separate line items, and this year they happened to coincide and co-term, so they went together, and it got me to come before you to request the purchase amount. But in any case, I'm coming asking for your authorization to purchase the license to use the program for twenty-one, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the calendar year that we have just begun, or the fiscal year, the year that we've just begun. And I know enough about the actual project since I've been here from the start, but if you've got any real NWA questions, Kari said she would come up and talk about the assessment components of this, if you really have any of those kinds of questions.
I did have a question that maybe is better for Kari. As far as continuing with NWEA after this year, I know the iReady tests have been implemented. Is there overlap there? Can you just kind of explain what we're doing with iReady and NWEA?
So I have phones with our tech support options right now, through the associates. So that kind of means directing them to the management program. We still maintain our NWEA as the new iReady suite, but then not all should have been developed. NWEA will maintain that. Additionally, we do, we will fly ones that come back out for the formal assessment plans, which will, as a digital tool, completely maintain as well. which will, as of last year, completely be taken as months. Uh, so last year, um, the form assessment grant did, um, take back for months and it was. So it's not gonna replace, i- iReady not replace that program.
It won't. Is it possible that it would? It just seems like it's testing the same thing. Um, and, and maybe I'm misunderstanding just what I?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, national.
I can't see her.
So, NWA has been around, um, and it does include our national norms.
Uh-huh.
At this point in time, um, iReady is not, I don't think it fills those weeds. Um, but at this point, it doesn't have the national norms, it doesn't have the state norms. So the data there is just to try that instruction that individuals do at high school regarding that math program.
So it's two different things.
If we wanted to get in the weeds, we could start talking about the possibility of replacing the i-step before replacing anything else.
Of course, yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not very comfortable with that.
Yeah, see, like I said, didn't want to go in those weeds, but the state has talked about it at different levels.
Oh, sure. Okay, thanks.
And, uh, I budget for this in CPF each year, so the, the money is coming out of the tax.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Board, I need a motion to accept the NWEA renewal for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And if the price is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty, I'm sorry. Any motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other questions about that? All those in favor for the NWEA renewal for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year at twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright. Item number twelve, renewal fileware support for sixteen, seventeen. Mr. Martin?
We've all heard voter correct. Fileware is actually an autocorrect. It's truly Filewave, um, W A V E. But autocorrect got some of our documents and some of them it did not, so. But the program is a, uh, program called Filewave and it is used to present changes to all the MacBook desktops with a couple of clicks. Our primary Filewave, uh, user is Joshua, uh, with Bronson as his backup, Josh Hawks. And, uh, in any case, this is basically made our management of these machines possible. So, uh, I'm coming to you to request the license extension or continuation for twenty-one, tw- sorry, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, uh, for this October through, uh, September. The cost is basic. I can read this document if you wish. I'll be glad to read it out if you want, but in the interest of time, I'll answer any questions instead.
Any questions? Alright, all those in favor for renewing the fileware support for the sixteen, seventeen school year at twenty-eight thousand, four twenty-two, signify by saying, oh, I need a motion, motion, I'm sorry. Any motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Alright, all those in favor for the renewal of the fileware support for sixteen, seventeen school year at the, uh, price of twenty-eight thousand, four twenty-two, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Item number thirteen, Mr. Tate, eighth-grade trip to Washington DC.
Yes, Mr. Paulson has, uh, brought his leadership to this trip for the eighth-grade students again. Presented to Mr. Duncy for his support and at this time I recommend an approval to the board. He's presented a letter to you in the background notes. His eighth-grade trip to Washington DC to take place October eleventh through the fifteenth. He's included the itinerary in his letter and how the transportation will be provided. The approximate cost at this time is six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Recommend approval of the out-of-state trip.
Okay. Board, I need a motion to accept, uh, the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC on October eleventh through the fifteenth of this school year?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
How many kids go on this?
Mr. Duncy, do you have ninety? How many students attended last year?
Currently we've got a hundred and three, seven, uh, fifteen, where from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty, we've had enough to a hundred and seventy. So we've got anywhere from three buses, three whole buses, four whole buses, um, yeah.
Depends on their grades?
You interested in chaperoning your trip?
Mr. Paulson is looking for a board member to, to chaperone.
Keep looking, Don.
The benefit is you get your own seats. You don't have to share with the middle school kids. Just let me know and I'll, I'll pass your name on to Don.
I'd rather sit there another Charles budget meeting.
Whoa!
I'll take that as a compliment, but. Just as long, but not quite as painful.
Oh, God. I'm thinking of anything worse.
Um, Noel, do you know, how many years have we been doing this, just roughly? How many years have we been doing this?
Uh, uh, I went in nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah.
And I think we've done it every year since nineteen ninety-six. I went as, 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 as the, uh, principal. Um, and I think before that even, I know Mr. Hessler before I came on board as principal and Mr. Hall. We, we, we did fly back in the day, but, uh.
Man!
Well, when, when Mr. Hurwin is a student, I think it was a wagon.
Ooh, good event. I don't think they did it back then.
Well, it's because we weren't, DC wasn't a recognized capital business.
Hurry up, this is getting out of here. I just want a trip approval, please.
Alright. All those in favor for the eighth-grade trip for, to Washington DC on October eleventh through the fifteenth, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business, uh, September fifteenth is our school board retreat. That will be here, um, at the Herne B Wells. Uh, we will start that at twelve, uh, go twelve to four, and then we'll have a special session from four to seven. Uh, regular scheduled school board meeting will be on September twentieth, twenty sixteen. Does anybody have any other new or old business?
Uh, I have a question, just for Pascal.
Well, and I was gonna ask if the board's permission, if Pascal Fettig could do a brief presentation on, uh, the preschool that's happening at Perry Worth. He's here this evening and, uh, representing the mental health of Boone County, but also, uh, the academy out of Perry Worth. So Pascal, if you would?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Tate, um, I, I feel that so far we are, have been quite successful. We haven't reached our maximum numbers that we were looking for. Uh, we have in, in inquiries. Uh, but we started the classroom, uh, with eight and, uh, quickly I had a ninth one by the, by the second week. We are now at, at eleven, um, and we, uh, anticipated reaching the number of fifteen, uh, by November and we're hoping that we'll have our twenty, uh, for the full classroom by January. We're basing that on, uh, on the numbers that we've had in inquiries. A lot of people, when we launched it, had already, uh, gotten on waiting list, um, and had already made up their mind. Um, we've gotten some of those people that come to us, um, and, uh, as far as I know, we haven't received any complaints. So it's, it's quite, uh, successful within the school. Our students, uh, acclimated very quickly, uh, with, uh, behavioral and emotional conditioning. They already, uh, eat in the cafeteria like the rest of the, uh, like the rest of the class. Uh, we have to get some of the parents, uh, to, to learn a little bit more about procedure, but that's going well. Um, the, uh, all of the furniture in the classroom was purchased brand spanking new, so it's, it's really a beautiful classroom. And some of the test testimonials that I've gotten so far is, uh, she loves ISPP. I can really see such an amazing difference in, in her and I cannot wait to see what the rest of the year holds. Um, we had another one. I'm amazed on how much our son has learned. He just told us about Alfred, uh, Nobel. His brother, who is six, is upset that he's learning stuff that he did not know. He tells us about what he did even before the messages we get from the school. She came home and was excited to tell us about liquid gases and solid. This is a wonderful program. Um, I really feel like, uh, it is successful. It is, um, accom- we are accomplishing, uh, what we were aiming to, both in academics and mimicking the procedures of the school. Uh, we haven't tested the nurses' services yet, so we're happy about that. And we haven't tested the office yet, so we're happy about that.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we feel it's, uh, uh, we, we were able to start with the numbers we had planned on. Um, and so we feel that we are where we need to be. We were hoping to open the second classroom, but, um, we just, uh, probably won't do that this year. Uh, we, we, uh, did some marketing, uh, by offering free base to some of the, uh, students that come with Y, uh, SPP. So that's before and after school care. That was successful. Uh, we're, we are offering, uh, now since we opened up to the entire Lebanon district, uh, we are, uh, going to start offering transportation, uh, from each of the schools, um, and to take them to Perry Worth. So if anyone is considering in the, uh, the, the holdback was, uh, transportation, basically what we're gonna do is have the children dropped off at each of our base sites and then we'll transport them from those base sites to, uh, to ISPP as a car rider, but it'll be our bus. Uh, it's a little bus. And, uh, then we'll pick them up after, uh, after school and bring them back down to each correspondent, uh, base sites. Um, this, uh, this will be extremely beneficial for some of the, the, uh, the children that have siblings that are already at base, so the parents. One, one of, one of the things that we were getting back is, well, I have to drop my child off at, at Harney and then it's kind of a, out of my way to go all the way up to Perry Worth. But so by offering transportation, we relieve you that they can drop off both the children in one place, pick them up in one place. Um, you know, we're, we're excited about expanding and, and, you know, part of our, uh, part of our, uh, contract states that we'll be discussing that, so we look forward to coming together with, uh, the administration and then later on with the board and hopefully expand, um, and, and, you know, by offering the transportation, uh, we'll be able to offer the service to even the schools that cannot house the, the YSPP. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer.
You say you got eleven now?
We have eleven now. And our maximum is gonna be twenty for one class.
Okay, twenty for one, okay.
I do have one question. We really scored when you offered the retirement package with our, with our, uh, instructors, so if you want to offer one next year when we expand, we'd love it. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Any other new or old business?
The, uh, Eagle Scout projects up around the soccer field are, is everything done up there or some done or what's the status of that?
Mr. Smith, can you, uh, comment on the status of the Eagle Scout projects at the soccer field?
My understanding is that the storm shed completed in one, uh, storm shelter, the RC side has been completed and yet we've used one on the other side, which is, I don't know, I might have not heard what the status of that is. I do know that it's only, it's not fully completed.
Uh, majority of it's fully, I'd say that, yeah. Any other questions?
I'm done.
I guess, I never do this hardly, but I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to remind you when the guys returned from the retreat that about sixteen is September's end. And I know there's some license that, uh, I was giving, uh, uh.
Okay. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Chair will second. All those in favor for adjourned, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Word adjourned.